Good evening, everyone, and welcome to your Miami'sburg City Council meeting. Today's date is June the 17th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM and we are here in Council chambers. Thank you all for being here. And I'm going to ask that you all stand. I do say a prayer over this meeting on council's behalf. And then I would ask that you join us to the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. If you'll all bow your heads, please. Dear God, we come to you tonight as Miami'sburg City Council. We ask that you help us make the best decisions and the right choices for our friends, our relatives, and our family members that reside in Miami'sburg. Thank you for our beautiful community. It's in your name we pray. Amen. All right, again, thank you all for being here. Council for everyone that's in the audience. Abby, can we have roll call, please? Councilmember speaker.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Chester.
Here.
Nicholas.
Here.
Stauder.
Here.
Thacker.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Council, as part of our agenda packets that we received last week, Keisha included the minutes from our June 3rd meeting. Do we have further discussions, any alterations? And seeing none, do I have a first and a second to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Abby, minutes have been approved. That brings us to our section of this meeting called Citizens Forum. It gives any citizen or citizenry group the right to come forward. Give us your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address City Council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address City Council at this time? Please. That's fine.
You're right ahead.
And if you just give us your name and your address in Aberdeen.
My name's Eric Lasby, and my address is 1875 Kings Barn Court in Miami'sburg.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the City Council. I'm the newly-elected president of the Aberdeen Homeowners Association. As president, I'm committed to ensuring our community is a safe and enjoyable place to live, and addressing the issues I'll outline tonight is a top priority for our board and residents. So thank you for allowing me to speak. Recently, the common areas in our subdivision were turned over by Medlar Development to our HOA. However, we've identified numerous issues that were present at the time of turnover and remain unresolved. These concerns were documented by our residents during an inspection with city officials in April of this year. My good neighbors, Todd North and Terry Folino, met with City Manager Keith Johnson, City Engineer Bob Stanley, and Councilman Mike McCabe. Together, they walked the area, and those officials acknowledged the problems, promising some action for us. Yet, months later, we've seen very little progress or updates, which brings me here tonight. Let me highlight some of the most pressing issues that remain unaddressed. First, drainage and erosion issues are widespread in our creek beds. Uncontrolled erosion and dead timber block water flow. At the Miami'sburg Springboro entrance, runoff isn't reaching the drain. Poor grading has created a large swampy breeding ground for mosquitoes south of the detention pond, and the same basin's walls are collapsing due to poor drainage control. Second, infrastructure is failing and unsafe. Incomplete curbing leaves excess gravel in the streets. Large cracks in new asphalt threaten its long-term integrity. Electrical boxes in our residents' front yards stand crooked, and unsecured electrical box covers dot the community, creating safety hazards for children in our neighborhood. And finally, maintenance and aesthetics suffer. We have dead trees, scrap wood, and black silt trapper material left behind by construction workers, and piles of non-degradable garbage litter the area. There are common spaces with landscaping where no irrigation was installed, in contrast with the majority of them where it seemed fairly obvious that irrigation was needed. And the lack of grass on the walking trail designated by the developer causes rutting, leaving an uneven surface impossible for our landscapers to maintain. So these issues existed when the common areas were handed over to us, and we firmly believe the developer or the city, and not our HOA, should bear the cost of repairs. Our residents shouldn't foot the bill for pre-existing problems that worsen day by day. We want to partner with the city to resolve this amicably and efficiently, and to that end, we respectfully request a written plan and timeline for addressing these issues within the next 30 days. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and we're eager to work with you to make Aberdeen a better place for everyone to live.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eric, for representing your group, and thank you each of you for coming. I would assume that Keith or Bob Stanley have your contact information on how to reach you by phone?
They should. I can provide it to them at the end of this meeting. They have Todd and Terry's information.
Yes, since you're the new representative, the president of the HOA, if you don't mind, unless you want to stay for the whole of me, you can give it to Abby. That way, it's not televised, your phone number.
Certainly.
And we will have Keith or Bob reach out to them, and I would assume somewhere you have a document that details everything that needs to be done out there.
Right, yes. The detailed document has been given to the folks that I mentioned, but I can provide it again.
Okay. Well, both of them are in the room, so if you'll please give Abby your phone number, expect a call.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all of you, for coming. All right, council. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone? Oh, Doug? That's right. How are you?
You're having a hard time hearing you, mayor.
Are you? The mics are on.
Before you start the clock, the Dayton Daily News shortly will be announcing first, second, and third place from the Best of Dayton. Currently, Miami'sburg has 19 businesses, individuals, and activities that, in the Miami Valley and the Best of Dayton, either one came in second or third from 27 choices last year. This year's voting, that ended in the middle of May, between Byers Road and the River, I had no less than 52 choices to choose from, which is almost double the 27 choices that we had last year. So there are a lot of people sitting in this room. There are a lot of people who are no longer with us, and there are decades of work that have made Miami'sburg the envy of the Miami Valley. Thank you. You can start the clock.
Okay. Now, we all know who you are, but we need your name.
Thank you for extending this opportunity to address you. I've got it in here.
Oh, okay.
My name is Doug Sorrell. My wife Diana and I reside at 1640 Brandon Hall Drive, Miami'sburg. My issue is the upcoming resolution you are considering concerning customer billing on non-active sprinkler systems in the off-season that use untreated water at a lower customer charge rate. My concerns and comments are twofold. Decades ago, I served on this council with City Manager Mark Gibson and others. At that time, in the early 80s, we knew Miami'sburg was facing a major water system upgrade at some future point. With Board Councilman Bill Fuller, current state rep Tom Young, former county commissioner Don Lucas, myself, Paul Gutschel, Art Volmer, and Hazel Isley, at the suggestion of City Manager Gibson, we began escrowing a water improvement fund encumbering excess city revenues. Common practice then, likely now also, we encumbered funds to replace the Linden Avenue and State Route 725 bridges also. Took years. Did that former water fund still exist when Miami'sburg undertook our $69 million upgrade some years ago, and was it used at that time underwriting a portion of the city's construction cost? I'm told that fund was used to repair our water system infrastructure until the upgrades could take place by Councilman Mike McCabe. To my next more pressing issue, six-month automatic minimum billing to homeowners with yard sprinkling systems. The city offered this option of different meters and lower costs for sprinkling systems. Has the number of homes choosing this option become so large it's become unmanageable, and the city has simply made the decision to build residence whether their system is active or not? The city knows when a yard sprinkler system is being activated. In fact, you require us to submit to the city a form declaring our systems do not have any backflow issues. Wouldn't it be reasonable for the water charges to commence at the point you are notified via a requirement invoked by the city? Which brings me to my next point. Are these minimum charges on inactive water sprinkling systems being billed because the city water fund needs this cash flow to service the debt on the water system upgrades? I was always led to believe charges for city water was based on usage. Your current practice of billing inactive systems contradicts that theory. In fact, the city might want to consider relabeling the word "minimum" to everyone with the word "convenience," because whether a homeowner uses water in their home or not, it's available. It's a convenience. In defense of homeowners who have underwritten at their personal expense the installation of water sprinkling systems to enhance their property, they have helped Miami'sburg become the envy of the Miami Valley. Over the last few county property tax reappraisals, Miami'sburg has ranked at the top of Montgomery County suburbs for increased valuations. That's no accident. The city needs to be grateful about those thoughtful residents, not unjustly charge and penalize them for being a considerate homeowner maintaining and appealing property. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Doug. Thanks for your viewpoint on that, and thank you for telling everyone, like you always do, how great Miami'sburg is and how we're on the list for all of those things.
I couldn't hear a word you said.
I said, "thank you."
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that would like to be a part of Citizens Forum tonight? Anyone at all? Okay. In seeing none or hearing none, I'm going to declare Citizens Forum closed. We are supposed to have a presentation tonight, and that group is not here, and I don't know why, but we hope they're all safe, and we'll get them back safe.
Mayor, your honor, just, I hate to interrupt, but if council could by motion appoint Abby Brown as your acting clerk for this evening?
Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Abby, would you mind? I'm just kidding.
You're official now.
Okay. We have no items of old business to discuss tonight. That takes us to page two of the agenda under new business. It's ordinance number 7156, and the city's Human Resources Director Leslie Coley is here to tell us all about it.
Thank you. I was going to ask, if you know what song they were going to do? That was my era, so I could fill in. Something from Footloose, right?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. As you mentioned, this is ordinance 7156. It's that time of year where we talk about our health insurance renewal. A little different than a lot of places, our actual health insurance runs from September 1st to August 31st, so we have our open enrollment in July. That's why we're making these decisions so soon in the year. As we discussed in our executive session two weeks ago, really good news. As a member of the OVC, along with about 15 other jurisdictions, it gives us a lot of buying power. We've been very fortunate to have a very healthy reserve. As a board, we had voted to spend down some of that reserve and allow jurisdictions to have very low premium renewals. So on average, for our two plans that we have, it will be a 0.8% premium rate increase. That means, actually, I take that back, a 0.1, sorry, 0.1% increase. Our high deductible plan will be a 0.8% increase, but our PPO will actually be a reduction. So that's extremely good news, both for the city as well as for our employees. With that, I would ask that, again, we make no changes to the structure or to the cost sharing of our insurance, and ask for approval of ordinance number 7156 if there are no questions.
Counsel, we talked about this in study session last evening. Any questions? Further discussion of Wesley? Okay, in hearing none, the chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7156 be read on two separate days, but authorize its adoption tonight on this first reading and have it read by title only.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Ryan. Ashley, I was going to say Keisha. Ashley, roll call.
Abby.
Abby. Councilmembers, speaker.
Yay.
Coleman.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stauder.
Yeah.
Thacker.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7156?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Ryan. Abby, roll call. Councilmember speaker.
Yay.
Coleman.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stauder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Okay. Council ordinance number 7156 has been adopted. Leslie, you have item number two on the agenda, ordinance number 7157.
Thank you. That is in regards to our workers' comp. As you know, each year, we do renew, and we have been invited into the group retro rating program for this coming year. Some of the things that we did discuss is that we use a company called Sedgwick. They act as both our third-party administrators. They represent us in hearings. They help us work through workers' comp claims. But they also have a branch that is the MCO or the Managed Care Organization, and they work directly with the employee to make sure that they're getting the treatment that they need, answer any questions they have, to make sure they can get well and back to work as soon as possible. So we do pay a fee for the third-party administrator. We do not pay a fee for the MCO side. As I mentioned, for this coming year, we were invited to group retro, so what that means is that we will pay the initial premium, you'll see on there, of the $180,979, but then, after 2026 is over, there will be three look-back periods. One will be in 12 months, one will be in 24 months, and one will be in 36 months. So that they're able to look back and see, how long did claims actually last? How did that affect? Maybe it's lost wages, maybe it's medical bills, but then, the hope is that we will get rebates based on the fact that we did not have a lot of high claims. This is a group, so again, we're absorbing each other's cost a little to make it a little reduce that liability. They expect that we will probably end up with about a 32% discount off of that, which is a target refund of almost $58,000. But again, it really just depends how things go in 2026 for all of those jurisdictions. We've been doing this for several years. We typically do very well on this, so it's a pretty low risk for the city. So based on that, talked a little bit about those refunds. Again, we use Sedgwick. They use all the best practices, have had very good results for all of their groups. And I know we did talk about it in executive session, but I didn't know if you had any additional questions for me this evening.
Counsel? Okay. In hearing none, the chair entertains a motion that we dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7157 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption tonight on this first reading, and have it read by title only. Counsel?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Abby, will you please read that?
Ordinance number 7157, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers Workers' Compensation Group Rating Program for the policy year beginning January 1st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7157?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Jeff. Abby, roll call. Councilmembers, Coleman.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stauder.
Yeah.
Thacker.
Yes.
Speaker.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 7157 has been adopted. Leslie, before you sit down, Abby, I failed to have you read ordinance number 7156 by title. Would you please read that?
Ordinance number 7156, an ordinance amending ordinance number 7085 to provide for the cost of group health insurance benefits through the Ohio Benefits Cooperative Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Okay. And the record will reflect the vote from there. Thank you, Leslie.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next up on our agenda, council, is agenda item number three. It's ordinance number 7158, and our Parks and Rec Director Ryan Davis is here to tell us all about it. Hi, Ryan.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Ordinance 7158 is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to proceed with the purchase of certain property identified as parcel K46-01713-0002 pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the real estate purchase contract between the city of Miami'sburg and the property owner and declaring an emergency. So all that is to say, this is to execute the purchase agreement for the Sunflower Park property. So we've been working on this for a few years, just some brief history for those in the audience. In 2001, the city began leasing about a two-acre parcel from Parkview Church. It's the yellow area that's outlined in that graphic there. That was a 10-year lease with a 10-year renewal. So in 2021, that lease expired. We kind of operated in a continuation-of-use mode for a couple of years. During that time, the church has explored selling off a full six-acre parcel with the area outlined in red there. Throughout that time, we were negotiating with them and talking about them about potential purchase of the property. Last year in May, we agreed to a one-year lease of the parcel while we worked out some of the final details, and today, I'm happy to announce that the church has agreed to move forward with the purchase agreement as we discussed last year, and this will complete the sale of that six-plus-acre parcel. So the final purchase price agreed upon is at $225,000. With the ordinance passing tonight, that will authorize the city manager to exercise the purchase agreement, and then we will enter the phase of title search and preparation for final closing arrangements, and the thought would be this, we would close on this parcel by the end of July. This amount is authorized within the 2025 CIP. We've talked about it quite a bit, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. We certainly have talked about Sunflower Park a lot. Any more questions about it at all? And the sunflowers are coming up out there, too.
We're getting there.
Yeah. It's awesome. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7158 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption on this first reading, and have it read by title only. Counsel?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Abby, can you read that, please?
Ordinance number 7158, ordinance to authorize the city manager to proceed with the purchase of certain property identified as parcel number K46-01713-0002 pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the real estate purchase contract between the city of Miami'sburg and the property owner and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Abby. Counsel, is there a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7158?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mike. Abby, roll call.
Councilmembers, McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stauder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Speaker.
Yay. Coleman. Yay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, mayor.
Appreciate you. Next up is item number four on your agenda. It's ordinance number 7159, and our city planner, Andrew Rodney, is here to tell us about it.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is an ordinance to enter into a contract with County Corp., who is our partner agency in the execution of our owner-occupied home rehab program. So this is a contract for them to manage our CDBG Community Development Block Grant allotment for fiscal year '24 that we received from the county for this important program. So basically, the contract itself, there's no real difference between this contract and other contracts that we've entered into with County Corp. in the past. The only changes are that, starting with this pot of funds, the CDBG program and the county are requiring us to conduct radon testing as part of our program. So for every home that we do work in, we are required to conduct radon testing, and if we find that the radon is above the acceptable level, then part of our project will also require mitigation of that radon as well. The way we're executing this portion of the project is that we have a $10,000 cap on any project under this program. We're going to keep that cap intact. If we have to do radon mitigation, we'll go above the cap to perform that work. So we want to make, we don't want to take away the important work of fixing roofs and windows and doors and things like that for radon mitigation, but obviously, we want to make sure that mitigation occurs, and we're required to make sure that that happens. In addition, our eligibility requirements change, as they do every single year as new figures come out from the Census Bureau, so it's still the same 80% AMI based on household size, and I just have a couple of examples. So any household, two-person household would qualify if they make $60,000, $50,000 or less. That's gross pre-tax. For a four-person household, it's $75,050, and it goes up from there depending on the size of the household. We have new applications that are currently under review, so we are asking for this ordinance to be approved as an emergency so we can sign that contract and get started as soon as possible, helping folks in our community with these essential home repairs. And with that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. We've talked about this program also. And any further questions, discussion with Andrew? Okay. In hearing none, the chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7159 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption tonight on this first reading, and have it read by title only. Counsel?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Abby.
Ordinance number 7159, an ordinance to enter into a contract with County Corp. for management of FY 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funds and city of Miami'sburg local funds for the owner-occupied home rehabilitation program to authorize the city manager to execute all
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Thank you. Ordinance number 7160 has been approved. I think that brings our city planner back up. Thank you, Bob. Next on your agenda is item number six, counsel. It's resolution number 3036. And we've met Andrew tonight, but here he is again.
Good evening, once again. Yes, this is a resolution to accept Housing Technical Assistance Grant of Funds from the Ohio Department of Development. So back in the springtime, the Ohio Department of Development made available $1.5 million across the state to help local jurisdictions, quote, "modernize the regulations and processes tied to zoning efforts." Primarily what this program is intended to do is help communities take a harder look at their zoning and subdivision codes and see what can be done to help promote housing development across the state. So that's kind of the primary reason behind this particular program. So it's called the Housing Technical Assistance Program. This is the first year of the program. I don't know if they're going to continue it, but this is at least the first instance of it. What's interesting is we are only one of 29 communities across the entire state that receive funding under this program. In fact, when the applications opened, they had to close them within 24 hours because basically all the money had already been spoken for, up to a $2 million cap that they had artificially had for themselves. So they received $2 million worth of applications in 24 hours. If that gives you any indication of the demand that there is out there for this type of grant funding, to take a look at some of these regulations across the state, including ours, which date back decades, that are probably in desperate need of a harder look and certainly some updating. So the project is to be completed no later than May 31st of 2026. It is on a reimbursement basis, so we will expend funds and then be reimbursed in kind by the Ohio Department of Development. There is no match requirement, and there's also no requirement that we adopt any one or any individual regulation that comes out of this process. It's just a way to encourage us to take a look at our processes, our regulations, our standards, and see if there's any way that we can improve those, modify those to promote housing development in our community. So we intend to hire a consultant to assist us with that work, and that's the primary purpose behind these funds. So with that, I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, you heard the details. Any questions?
Great.
The chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that resolution number 3036 be read in full, but have it read by title only tonight. Counsel, do I have a first and a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Abby?
Ordinance number 7160, an ordinance revising the 2008 Basement Backup Prevention Program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7160?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jeff. Abby, roll call?
Council members, Nicholas?
Did you say me? Sorry. I just, I can't hardly hear you. Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Thank you. Ordinance number 7160 has been approved. I think that brings our city planner back up. Thank you, Bob. Next on your agenda is item number six, counsel. It's resolution number 3036. And we've met Andrew tonight, but here he is again.
Good evening, once again. Yes, this is a resolution to accept Housing Technical Assistance Grant of Funds from the Ohio Department of Development. So back in the springtime, the Ohio Department of Development made available $1.5 million across the state to help local jurisdictions, quote, "modernize the regulations and processes tied to zoning efforts." Primarily what this program is intended to do is help communities take a harder look at their zoning and subdivision codes and see what can be done to help promote housing development across the state. So that's kind of the primary reason behind this particular program. So it's called the Housing Technical Assistance Program. This is the first year of the program. I don't know if they're going to continue it, but this is at least the first instance of it. What's interesting is we are only one of 29 communities across the entire state that receive funding under this program. In fact, when the applications opened, they had to close them within 24 hours because basically all the money had already been spoken for, up to a $2 million cap that they had artificially had for themselves. So they received $2 million worth of applications in 24 hours. If that gives you any indication of the demand that there is out there for this type of grant funding, to take a look at some of these regulations across the state, including ours, which date back decades, that are probably in desperate need of a harder look and certainly some updating. So the project is to be completed no later than May 31st of 2026. It is on a reimbursement basis, so we will expend funds and then be reimbursed in kind by the Ohio Department of Development. There is no match requirement, and there's also no requirement that we adopt any one or any individual regulation that comes out of this process. It's just a way to encourage us to take a look at our processes, our regulations, our standards, and see if there's any way that we can improve those, modify those to promote housing development in our community. So we intend to hire a consultant to assist us with that work, and that's the primary purpose behind these funds. So with that, I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, you heard the details. Any questions?
Great.
The chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that resolution number 3036 be read in full, but have it read by title only tonight. Counsel, do I have a first and a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Abby?
Is this the resolution? Do I read the resolution?
You'll read it?
Need to read it. Just read it by title only.
Resolution number 3036, a resolution to accept Housing Technical Assistance Program Grant of Funds from the Ohio Department of Development.
Thank you, Abby. Counsel, do I have a motion to pass resolution number 3036 tonight?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Jeff. Abby, roll call?
Council members, Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nestor?
Yay.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stauder?
Yay.
Becker?
Yes.
Beakler?
Yay.
Colvin?
Yay. Case Landing is also closed beginning on Friday, uh, through the event to take, uh, to allow for the fireworks to happen. And then for the actual event, we're closing the orange piece of Water Street that you see there in West Central across from Ron's. And then the Market Square Parking Lot or the parking lot across from Ron's Patio there, that's going to be closed from Thursday, uh, through the conclusion of the event. And then it will also be closed through on Sunday, uh, to allow for all the dumpsters and things that get stored there to be removed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, you've heard, um, the details of, uh, motion, the motion in front of you. Do I have a first and a second to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. We're going to have a festival. Council, um, we have no agenda items for the upcoming meeting on July 1st. It's very close to the July 4th holiday. Um, do I have a first and a second to cancel, the July 1st meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We are not going to have a meeting July the 1st. You can still call and harass them if you want.
I will.
I'm very happy to see that our presenters are here. Come on up and tell us all about CPAM.
I apologize. Blame it completely on me.
That's okay.
I have a tech-week brain right now.
For those at home, this is Casey Upstein. She represents CPAM.
Hi.
And tell us about your upcoming show.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Collins. Council members, a lot of friendly faces up there. Good to see you all. Uh, if you're not familiar, I am Casey Upstein. I am the President of the Board for Children's Performing Arts in Miamisburg. Uh, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit children's organization that resides primarily here in Miamisburg. Um, and we have been around since 2010. So we're really excited that we're putting on this latest show, which is Footloose, um, which is done in the eighties, which is a lot of fun. Today was Neon Day at Tech Week. So we have a lot of fun colors going on. And so the show is this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I brought some presenters with me that are going to sing for you. So first up, we have three. Um, what's really neat is that we have twenty-seven kids in this show from twelve different communities, even in, outside of Miamisburg, which is really neat. And I brought a representation with me. So we're going to start with, uh, let's see, Mia Davis. She is from the Belbrook area. Um, next to her is David Hopkins from Oakwood, Miriam Siff from Oakwood as well. And then Abby Berlin, who is Miamisburg. And Allison is our, one of our stage managers. She's going to work all this stuff for us. So first, we're going to start with a song called, uh, uh, remind me. "Learning to be Silent," which I don't know how to do. Okay. And this is... Yes. Show for you, some complimentary tickets and flyers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And next, we're going to have Mia Davis, who plays Ariel, and David Hopkins, who plays Ren, do one of our favorites from the eighties. For everybody that was there, um, "Almost Paradise." Thank you for having us. Um, the show is this weekend. And we are at Carlisle High School, which is nice and air-conditioned. Uh, if you want to come and see that show, Friday, two shows on Saturday and one on Sunday. Ryan knows what I'm talking about. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Let them down. It's the second meeting of the month. So we'll go down and talk to the Vice Mayor, Steve Beekler. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good.
How are you tonight? Great job, as always. Uh, want to thank, uh, members of CPAM coming in. It was, uh, didn't think they were going to make it, but, uh, pleasant surprise that they came here again. So thank them for coming. Had the distinct honor of last night of, uh, uh, attending the State Softball Awards banquet up in Columbus. And one of our twenty-five grads, Michael Holt, was named second-team All-State. And she was honored, and it was a privilege and honor for me to, to, uh, attend that with her and her family. So I just want to recognize her. You know, she was, uh, first-team G-Walk, uh, G-Walk Player of the Year, which is very rare for an outfielder to be named Player of the Year of any conference. Usually that goes to a pitcher or an infielder. But, uh, uh, well-deserving of her. So I just wanted to recognize her for that. And, uh, that's about it.
I'm sure she appreciates you, too.
Yeah, thank you.
For your coaching and mentoring. Congratulations. Councilman Ryan Colvin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last Saturday morning, I was with Councilman Tom Nicholas in Riverfront Park for the Love Our City event. And I think that is probably one of the best initiatives that we, we do here. Um, you know, that is a, a public-private partnership. We empower the church leaders to go out and, um, and beautify our community. I mean, this is just one of those areas. And we empower them, again, to go out and, and meet the needs and stuff of those. And they did a lot of fantastic work, works all across our community, too many to name. And so I want to thank them again for that. It was an outstanding event. And also today, I was with Councilman McKay at the, uh, the Staff Appreciation Luncheon hosted by our Police Department. And I just want to say thank you to them. They did a fantastic job. You know, then I just showed up there because I kind of felt guilty because I felt like I should be serving them and city staff to thank them for all that they do. So again, I appreciate that. And also, obviously, wanted to give a shout out to Lowe's. I mean, they, uh, they reached out to our Police Department, said, "What can we do? Uh, what, what do you need?" And they ended up donating a Blackstone Grill, which was utilized today and to have Officer Jason Priest do his magic on the grill. And he did a fantastic job. So thank you to Lowe's for that. And, uh, uh, Mayor, that's all I got. Thank you.
How were the burgers?
Fantastic. So Jason did a great job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate you. Councilman, uh, Mike McKay?
As always, these guys cover it all. I do want to shout out to a young ninety-plus-year-old man that worked hard from Methodist, from Parkview Methodist Church on our project, Sunflower Park. Herman Lair was with this program from day one to see it through. And were very cooperative. And I just want to thank him for the hard work he made, for the accomplishment that we all put up in front. And Keith was right in all that, all that.
Doing the Charlie Case thing here.
Thank you.
Lots of future generations will plan that part, right? Councilman Jeff Nestor?
Just glad everything's warming up. Everybody's getting downtown. And remember the summer? Take the time and donate blood.
Councilwoman Sarah Becker?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Well, thanks for being here. Councilman Tom, uh, John Stauder, I knew you.
You know, it's unusual, but I missed a meal. Sorry, Chief. I don't miss too many of them. I want to thank everybody for their kind words. And thoughts on the parson and the sister.
Our hearts are with you and your whole family. Councilman Tom Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
City Mayor Keith Johnson?
Mayor, just a, a couple of, uh, items. I do want to embellish a little bit on what Councilman McKay said, uh, because I was able to do a little research. Actually, our team, uh, looking back at Sunflower Park, uh, included, uh, Ryan Davis, uh, Chris Fine, uh, myself. And then we also used, uh, Mark Forn's, uh, reed lady. I, I actually remember when this property was annexed into the city, uh, I was actually part of that, uh, annexation. I was able to find an article where Berman and his wife, Vi, had been married eighty years. And that's just hard to wrap your head around. I believe she's slightly older. And I think Berman turns a hundred and one this year. And it is just, he's still working. You see him there every day. But when they, uh, reached out to us about that, uh, property, we were probably about this far apart on what we thought we could do and what, how it would work for the church. So to be able to pull that together, uh, just, I really appreciate Parkview Church and what they've done. And I know the residents had, that, uh, but that had expressed their desire. So, uh, thankfully, we were finally able to pull that together. Then the, the other item was just to recognize, uh, Public Works Department, um, Dave is here tonight, his Storm Division and Street Department. And really, their quick work on the State Route 725, Upper Miamisburg Road, uh, problem that we had. We actually had some pavement failure out there. Uh, there is a long-term fix somewhere for that roadway, but it is millions in order to go in and, and correct all the storm drainage and redo all the base. So we do, uh, we think our best job of trying to keep that roadway, uh, together. It's in really good shape, except for a couple of sections. And those sections had failed, uh, last month. Street Department went out there and, uh, excavated a total of about almost two-hundred feet and put down two, uh, excuse me, ten tons of asphalt. So that roadway should be, uh, good, uh, for a long time in the future. And as we, uh, certainly as we develop long-term, um, answers to how to, how to address that roadway. But, uh, the roadway itself is one of the oldest roads in the city. It just, um, needs some updates. So, Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Law Director Phil Callahan, thanks for being here, keeping me in shape. Abby, thank you for being here and filling in for Keisha. Keisha's under the weather, and it's funny how you get in a flow with two, with two people. So, I know, um, I can be difficult. So thank you. I appreciate it. Summer's happening in Miamisburg. There are people running around the splash pad, and the park is full all day. And I, it just, it's just fabulous seeing the activities in our streets and what's going on downtown. So with that, we do not have a need for a study session tonight. So I guess we'll see you in mid-July, right? Or we'll be live in mid-July.
See you around town.
See you around town. Thank you all.